Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Leifeld. A quorum has been established. Tonight we have with us, I was looking for you, there you go, Julia Carlos, and she's the new manager of the library, and she would like to do a little presentation for us. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Fassbender. Councilpersons, thank you so much for giving me the time to be here this evening. I'm here, I'm the brand-new manager of the Pleasant Hill Library. I've been in this position for about six weeks. So, and I'm here to just share a little bit about what we're doing at the library now, what we have upcoming soon. And this is a picture of our, our building that's currently being remodeled. You can visit us in the, our interim location, we're in the Westview Center kind of kitty-corner from the, the regular library building. And I'm here to share, no, I said that already, kidding. So this is our vision, mission, and core values, which were developed as part of the library's first-ever strategic plan that we created over the course of several months in 2017. During that process, over 170 people, including library staff and other stakeholders, participated in workshops, and over 7,200 survey responses were received from the public. These statements that you see here guide our work on a high level and on a day-to-day basis. You can find more information about the strategic plan on, on the library website under "About Us" on the top menu bar, and then "Strategic Plan." This is a little bit about the library of today. The library today has seen a significant rise in the demand for and supply of digital resources. There's that picture in the upper-left corner of the screen. Several apps like Cloud Library, RB Digital, and Hoopla give library users access to free, downloadable books, audiobooks, movies, music, and magazines. Below that is our to-go resources. We have a lot of free to-go kits that provide learning opportunities. You can check out nature backpacks and explore the outdoors with a magnifying glass, binoculars, and activity sheets. Or you can try out a new way to move your body with our fitness kits, where you can learn the basics of Tai Chi, or how to strengthen your core and build a strong, healthy back. Which those of us who sit all day can really use that information. And then on the right side, we've got those cute kids. The library today is also very committed to early literacy. We have weekly storytimes for babies and storytimes for the two-to-six crowd that are core programs we offer, like I said, almost every week, that focus on pre-reading skills, and share with the parents and caregivers in attendance how they can continue to develop those skills outside of storytime. Some statistics for you, these are 2018 numbers, and a lot of people really like statistics. So, in 2018, over 97,000 people visited the Pleasant Hill Library. That's enough to fill the twins target field more than twice, completely full with people that visited the library. The average resident of Hastings borrowed nine items from the library. So we are providing a lot of value with those library cards. We also, in our library, provided almost 29,000 hours of online access. That's if you were on the library for three straight years. That's how many hours of internet access we provided in the library to community members. And then, and that's just in Hastings. And then, we had, this is countywide, over 1.2 million visits to our website. So it's a really used resource that we have available to everyone. So that's a little snapshot of the library today. This is what we have coming up soon. First up, there's the 3D printer. Dakota County Library values free and open access to information, community talent, and technology. Prior to our renovation, individuals of all ages were creating with use of 3D printers. And when the library reopens, Pleasant Hill will have an iLab Makerspace to offer everyone the chance to use state-of-the-art technology and equipment that's often inaccessible due to costs or availability. Users will be able to design, create, and imagine projects during library hours that will help them preserve family history or make unique projects. On the right side of the picture, we have one of our accessibility kits. So just as your city council and the school board have proclaimed that all are welcome in Hastings, Dakota County Library is also committed to acting inclusively, valuing and respecting differences. The new library will include a calming space specially designed for individuals who need a comforting space to regulate while at the library, especially those with autism spectrum disorder, sensory processing differences, or other disabilities. Anyone will be able to use the calming space. We'll also have an accessibility kit, like the one in the picture, that contains fidgets, noise-canceling headphones, or other items that you can use in the library if you just need a little something extra while you're there. And below there, there's the Le Duke Mansion. So the city of Hastings is committed to protecting and promoting the unique characteristics of the community, including its history and scenic beauty. So the library renovation is really taking advantage of that, and will highlight the community's history and natural resources through design elements like rivers in the terrazzo tile floor, and etchings of local landmarks in the glass walls of our study rooms and the iLab Makerspace. We also, thanks to a recent grant from the Minnesota Historical Society, installed a new microfiche reader so people can access, have easier access to our local newspaper archive. And that is my, the end of my little snapshot. I'm here, if you have questions, my contact information is on the slide, and I'm happy to answer questions now, or please get in contact with me in the future. I'm really looking forward to partnering with the community to see what the library can do to make Hastings a stronger, more vibrant community. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Council, any questions, or yes?
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Your Honor. So you, you had mentioned a survey. What were, how many did you get back? What was the?
It was about 7,200 countywide.
In a survey?
In a survey.
7,200 people?
Yep.
And across Dakota County, or?
Yep.
How do you get such good reach?
Magic. I'm not sure. That's a great question. We had, the survey went out through library social media, and we just communicated it to a lot of our community partners, too. One, I'm not positive of all the way, I wasn't involved in that process at that part, but we have a lot of increasing connections with school districts across the county through our student card program that's available, not in ISD 200 quite yet, but, so we have fine-free cards for high school students, so I know we've worked with those community partners in the, in the school districts, and just, you know, everyone we know, take our survey, tell us what you're interested in, what you love about the library, what you think we could do better, all those things.
Well, that's great. That's a, that's a lot of people.
It was a really great feedback, and it was really great to hear.
And then, Your Honor, one more thing. So I know you're relatively new, so I don't expect any immediate action on this yet, but one thing that I've noticed over the couple of years that I've been here, and we get the updates, is that there's a fair amount of programs that are available. However, not necessarily all at the time of the day that my family would be able to go, for example. So, a lot during the day. I don't know if there's any interest in putting some emphasis into occasional evening types of activities as well. I don't know if you have thoughts on that right now, or just a food for thought for future.
That's great feedback. It's something that, before I came into this position, I was in youth programming at the system level, so it's, you know, that kind of feedback is definitely something that we use to plan our future programs. So I, I know that a lot of working parents, those daytime programs are really challenging for them, and they're not able to do that. So, thank you for that feedback, and we're starting to think now about fall. So I'll take that to my staff, and we'll, we'll put that in the hopper with all our, they have a lot of great ideas, so.
Julie, is there an anticipated date when it will be complete? You may have said that.
I didn't, I don't think. Summer, they're not going to commit any, you know, construction projects. They just
Sure.
take the time they take, and right now it is on schedule, so we're looking at sometime this summer.
Great, thank you.
We'll invite you for sure.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
So, y'all have my contact information now. Please get ahold of me if there's anything I can help you with. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the February 19 meeting? Seeing none, they are approved. Comments from the audience? Anyone here that would like to approach the council tonight? No one here to approach the council? Okay. Council, there, are there any items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Brox, and seconded by Councilmember Fulch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Julie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, tonight you requested to accept the proposal from the Mercer Group for executive search firm services to assist with recruiting and hiring a permanent city administrator. Former city administrator Melanie Mescola Lee resigned in January 4th of 2019. Since that time, the Administrative Committee of the council has been on four occasions to develop a request for proposals, job description, place an interim, and review proposals that were received and interview firms. So last Thursday evening, on February 28th, we interviewed three firms, and of those three, the committee is recommending we retain the Mercer Group.
Okay. Comments, or council? Councilmember Brox?
Thank you, Mayor. As the Chair of the Administrative Committee, I'd just like to say that the proposals that we received were all great proposals. The people we interviewed all had different strengths. Some of the strengths of the firms that we talked to, one had a very regional and national presence, which was their strength. One had a very defined process. And the firm we ended up hiring is a firm that is, we're going to be working with someone who is very well-respected in the Minnesota community, and has recently conducted searches for Forest Lake, Sault Ste. Paul, and West Ste. Paul. That is Mr. Jim Miller, and he's going to be our main contact for city council and staff during the search process. He was the Executive Director for the League of Minnesota Cities for 22 years, and was also a city administrator in Minnetoka for 13 years. So we had a high level of comfortability with him, and we're looking forward to working with him. He has a great reputation. He's very well-respected in the community. So those are some of the reasons that we chose to work with him and the Mercer Group. So if, yeah, that's, that's basically what I wanted to summarize, and say that we did have great proposals, and that any one of the top firms that we interviewed, we could have hired. So we're very thankful for that, and we're looking forward to moving to the next phase of the process.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council, I need a motion. Oh, Councilmember Fulch?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to concur with Councilmember Brox, and also to thank Councilmember Lund. We've been working as a good team together, and I've, and I feel like we're bonding, and so, as we move together. It's really nice, actually. I, we just wanted to add, I, I personally had known one of, at least one of the individuals that was on, of the three that we did interview, and I concur that they all have excellent qualifications. Something in particular that I think resonated with all three of us was Jim Miller. He is actually retired, and so this is one of his, I want, one of his, you know, consulting, you know, extra duties that he's doing. It's not a full-time job, and he let us know that he was always going to make himself available to us if we had any questions at any time, and he would take the extra effort to meet any kinds of needs that we identified as we go along. He'd be willing to, you know, as a, for instance, he said that he'd be happy to come and just schedule a day and be in the conference room and make himself available to staff or the public who wanted to come in and share their thoughts on the city administrator as we move forward. And so that, there was just really a lot of, not just him being very highly respected, but there was just a lot of comfort in knowing that we were going to be able to depend on him readily as we move through this. And so, I think we're really in a unique position where we have a new mayor, and we don't have a city administrator, and knowing that we were going to have a consultant that was coming on that had so much experience and could bring so much forward in the process made me feel really good about it as well. So, that was it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Council? I'll need a motion, yes?
Just quickly on timeline, too, since we're talking about this subject, maybe we'll just, we're, should we all move this forward? We're, we're marching towards a timeline that we had set forth, you know, originally. So, I think, again, we're not, we're all in agreement that we're not rushing this process, but we're well-positioned, should this be the direction we go, to continue on and, and make good strides towards selecting the right person for our city, and to lead the staff. So, I just, I don't have specific timeline dates that I want to point out, other than we're on track, and things are going well.
Thank you. Okay, I'll need a motion. Okay, Councilmember Balsanek? Second, Councilmember Vaughn? Well, I just want to say I appreciate it, too. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Council, do you have any announcements? Councilmember Vaughn?
I have just two upcoming meetings that are representing us this Thursday at 9:30 with the Great River Rail. tuition is being down red wing. Again, some individuals, elected officials, and some legislative bodies down from La Crosse in the planning area meet quarterly, and we talk about getting a second train is our most, our goal from St. Paul to Chicago. Currently, we take, there's one train from Amtrak, so I'll be doing that Thursday. And then, Mayor, you may have us, but on March 14th, we have a hedger meeting here at City Council Chambers.
Councilmember Brox?
Can I just ask a question? Do we have any sort of report, not, it doesn't have to be formal, but just how the legislative day went at the Capitol? I wasn't there, so I was just curious if you could just summarize what you talked about with our legislators.
That's okay. We did, we met with Representative Gergens, Jurgens, and Councilmember Vaughn and Fulch and Balsanek were there, along with myself. And we chatted about various things. My head, my mind is losing. We talked to Representative Bigum. Her transportation was our main concern. Like, we had chatted to them, too, that we had just did our strategic, strategic planning, and sessions with the council, and our, we, we made big realizations through the strategic planning that what we thought were large emphasizes weren't really. And we were, our main concern for the strategic, strategic planning was transportation, but more of the, the improvements of the streets, and we passed that on to them as well. Senator Bigum, she's going to work with us on the 316 project, and anyone else want to add to that? You kind of threw me off guard. Oh, Councilmember Fulch?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. So, yes, we did discuss with both of our representatives issues surrounding the need for supplemental funding to local government, you know, to help with local roads. And then also to help support funding for MINDOT, so that MINDOT is capable of giving grants to local government as well. As a, for instance, one of the ways we're looking at funding our safety improvements to Highway 316, and we know this, and so it's for the, for the public, is I, we currently have a $1.5 million gap, and our engineering department has put forward a request for a grant from MINDOT. And what will help make that possible is if there is, you know, possibly, you know, an increase in gas tax or further revenue that's made available to MINDOT, so that they can, you know, give funds to, you know, local governments. And so there was a couple of things. And then the last was, there's been discussion at the Capitol of making funding available, you know, directly to small cities and governments such as ours, to assist directly then with local road improvement projects. And so, there's quite a number of legislative proposals that are moving forward that are regarding assisting with local roads and, and infrastructure. And then another issue we discussed was housing. There's a few proposals that are out there that would assist local government in making workforce housing more available, you know, and in different kinds of capacities, like matching funds that could be made available or grants. And so, we discussed some of that, and then there's a couple of other issues. At our last meeting, Councilmember Balsanek did a nice job of discussing improvements to fully funding the local government aid to, I think it was 2001 levels, before it had been drastically cut. And while we were up there at the Capitol, we actually ran into our former mayor, Paul Hicks, and, and he shared with us, he thought that that could possibly mean more, a million or more dollars if we were fully funded to the 2001 levels for, for our city. And so, it was really encouraging to hear that that may be a possibility. There's no promises by any means, but it's nice to hear that the governor is proposing to have LGA return to its previous funding levels for us. And then there, and another issue that is currently out there is cities are currently assessed sales tax on construction projects. And so, well, I should say, we're supposed to be exempt, we're supposed to be exempt, but the processes to get that tax exemption through the Department of Revenue are really, really onerous. I mean, there's only a few projects that you're able to pull that off and get the sales tax exemption for construction materials, and so there has been a bill that's been brought forward the last few years that would make it, instead of the sales tax exemption being upfront, the cities would be eligible for a refund through the Department of Revenue for that tax, so that we could receive that back. And so it's really encouraging. I can't remember off the top of my head, as Mary said, I wasn't prepared, but I think it has a $17 million, if I remember, impact to the state overall. If the cities were allowed to have that sales tax exemption on construction materials. And so, it adds up. It adds up, and it would really assist us a lot. And so, gentlemen, did you have any other issues that you can remember that we really hit on?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well-stated, Councilmember Fulch. The, the LGA, local government assistance, is something that I've always tried to keep an eye on over the years. There are some cities who take their local government assistance, which varies from year to year, and they plug it into their general fund for budgeting purposes. We do not do that, and I, I think we are very wise in not doing that because we don't know how much we're going to get. Last year, we got $720,000, something like that. Our former mayor seemed to think that if all went well, maybe close to a million. What we always have done is plug that in to our capital improvement programs, purchasing equipment for the fire department, police department, Public Works, rather than, again, using it for regular budgetary types of things. This, we have always felt is a very wise thing to do. Having been on the Finance Committee the last couple of years, we, we did hold to that, and that's very good. One other thing to perhaps mention is that the governor did come and address the league members on Thursday morning, and gave a very robust presentation in terms of what he would like to do, and what he had promised, and how he hopes we can get done what needs to be done for the state of Minnesota. We all know that there are some twists and turns. We've had a reduction in the forecast of the surplus here in the last couple of days. So, I don't foresee the, the legislature adjourning before the 11th hour and the 59th minute. Things will be very exciting to watch. But the nice thing is that the governor is very proud of what we do at the local government level all throughout the state, and both Senator Bigum and Representative Jurgens are attuned to what we are looking for, and I think that's good. It's a bipartisan approach. We are an apolitical body, and we do not lean to the left or right. We just lean on our senators and representatives to do what is good for the cities. When you look at how cities operate, we balance our budgets. We, we make good decisions, and life goes on. We do not work in terms of deficits or anything like that, and I think that's something we can all be proud of. So, a little bit of background on that. It was, it's always a delight to get down to the Capitol, to feel the energy and see that everybody is doing their best to do what they think is best for the state of Minnesota and our cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaughn?
I think, thank you, Your Honor. One thing I did notice when we were there, I was actually surprised. It's not a bonding year, but Representative Jurgens did get the city hall project for Hastings, got a hearing. So I give staff credit for going up there on a Wednesday night at 6 o'clock or something like that. But it, it is in the proposal, but again, there might be some bonding this year, and I was, give it credit, that we are on that radar for the state level to help our city halls. So, that was one thing I got surprised by. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, it was my first experience. I was, I have to say, I was a bit overwhelmed. But a lot of knowledge went into my brain, and actually, I think it's stuck there. But, so, thank you for helping me out with what we, what all happened that day. So, with that, I will, there'll be a Planning Commission meeting on Monday, March 11th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. There'll also is, is going to be the Alternative Spring Break, Monday, March 11th through the 15th, at the Hastings Middle School. Our next council meeting will be Monday, March 18th. And I just want to say, everybody on break next week, have a fun and safe time, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Fulch? Or, I'm sorry.
Balsanek?
Your Honor, if I may, prior to our meeting on the 18th, there is a reception at 6:00 PM upstairs to, to recognize and get to know, what do we have? Two police officers coming on board? Anybody else?
One firefighter.
One firefighter as well.
And a deputy city clerk.
And a deputy?
City clerk.
Yes, city clerk, okay. So that reception is open to the public. There will be some refreshments. And this is really nice, because the receptions usually take place after we're in a council meeting. So this way, we get to take advantage of the, of the refreshments. And also meet, meet with the folks that are coming on board. Also, I just wanted to mention, ever since I've been on the council, I have attended the Reserve Officers Banquet annually, and that is scheduled for the 20th of March, Wednesday evening. And that is open to the public, if you would like to attend. Just call the Police Department here at City Hall and make a reservation. It's a time to honor some people that do a great, great job for the city of Hastings, and that is our Reserve Police Officer Force. And I would encourage anybody who would like And I would encourage anybody who would like to get involved in that to apply. Right now, we're a little down on, on the reserve component. And so we could use another half a dozen to a dozen individuals who would like to help out. And, and that, that's a very worthy outfit, very, very much so. I'm sorry, thank you that, wanted to add that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulch?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give a quick update that last week was the last in the series for the Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity workshops that were taking place. And I was so impressed, impressed by the commitment of the folks who have been attending those workshops. There must have been at least forty to fifty people still at the last workshop. And I can't remember exactly how many there have been. I want to say at least five of those workshops. And they're three hours long apiece. And so it's a pretty major time commitment. And not everybody makes it to every, you know, workshop meeting, because I didn't, most certainly. But it was wonderful to see the diversity of representatives from our community, from business, faith-based, nonprofits, teachers, school administration, school board members, council members. It was really just, it was just a wonderful experience. And so just a quick update that the YMCA, who has been leading that initiative, that they are now taking the final products, the final brainstorming sessions from those groups. And it broke out into, it was government, business, and the schools, you know, what each could, you know, do to move our community forward. And they're going to be taking those plans and formulating some implementation steps and figuring out what kinds of resources are needed for the short term, midterm, and long term of the initiative within our community. And so we, as a council, will be hearing back from the group hopefully sometime in the next six months for what they think their next steps will be. The exact, there's an executive committee that'll be working on defining that. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes? Okay, thank you. Second? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.